All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Work Session for Monday, September 30th, 2024, 2:06 PM. My name is Ty Mancur, Chair of the Board. My left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Gary Edwards. We have Commissioner Mahia on Zoom, and Commissioner Claus is excused. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and all three Assistant County Managers, Robin Campbell, Rob Keldar, and Josh Cummings, folks from our budget team for the first agenda item. And I saw Auditor Mary Hall has joined us as well. So, public virtual attendance is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We have two and a half hours to cover one substantive item that could take some time, and then our standing items for Commissioner check-in. So, first up is Budget Overview and Forecast Update. I'm going to pass it to the County Manager.
Thank you so much, Chair. I want to start by thanking all the budget staff in our wonderful county for all the hard work that they've been doing. Also, special thanks to Auditor Hall and her team. I know that they have a lot going on with the election meetup. And then, of course, our budget team here at the table for their hard work, late nights, a lot going on with everything that we have with our budget module. So today, we're going to be looking at a high-level overview of 2425 revenue and expenditures. We're going to talk about county forecasts, and then what's next in the budget process. And during this presentation, I'll be handing over to members of the budget team to cover some items. County Commissioners, the first item we wanted to cover is just a quick overview of the county budget outlooks, and some of the bullet points here that I believe some of you have seen before, but don't want to take it for granted since this is the first full year that Commissioner Fornier and Commissioner Claus will be going through some of these budget items, and as well as me, too. So, we're working our way through it. But there's over 90 separate funds, 20 distinct offices and departments. When we look at the operating budget, we've established a biennial budget with distinct appropriations for each year, and midterm adjustments required by the RCW there that allows us to make those changes. And then the capital budget, which includes full cost, project costs, balances to the capital facilities plan that provides flexibility between the years. When we look at the outlook for Thurston County, I'll, you know, pass over to Summer if you want to cover some of these items here at a high-level overview.
Sure. So, unemployment in Thurston County in August was at 4.6%. We showed that the 2024 population growth was 0.12%. The real estate market is still pretty competitive with homes in the Olympia area selling within 16 days, but they are selling it below about 5.2% list price. We did see, while our property tax continues to increase limited to the 1% growth, and the preliminary value that we've received for new construction from the assessor is at 922 million, which shows a 1.5% growth over 2023. Our total preliminary assessed value in the county is up about 1.6%. Sales tax growth is coming in at about 1.6% as well. And as we have witnessed, cost of doing business is outpacing our county revenues.
Yeah, if I can just, before we go to the next slide, that we're going to spend some time talking about the third and second to the last bullet points about total assessed value and the sales tax, because while they are up, they are below the, well, at least sales tax is below the projected amount. Did we have an estimate for assessed value property tax?
Yes, it's at 59.9 billion.
And so, that, what we're saying there is that revenue is coming in lower than anticipated, which is, really leads to the last point, Commissioners, about the cost of business that's outpacing county revenues. That's really going to be the theme of this presentation, and some of the challenges that we're having as we look at the forecast in just a few minutes.
You say cost of your business, is that inflation? Is that another word for that, or is it just, is that, is this broader than just that?
Yeah, it's, it's the CPI that drives the cost of goods and services up in the county. It's also the MOU costs higher than anticipated. And so, when I, when we look at those COLA costs and those other components, that's where we can see our budget on a steady ramp up. Revenues are flat, and so they're not necessarily pacing together.
So it's not just cost of goods, it's also cost of contracts?
Yep.
But, but isn't that all inflation? Isn't that all because of the extremely high inflation we've got?
Inflation has a lot to do with costs being expensive and how that impacts the way in which then we are able to do our, do services, negotiate contracts, et cetera, yes. All right, next slide. This is a property tax assessed value chart overview. It looks at the last 10 years and what the county is bringing in. Summer, is anything you want to point out on this?
Not particularly. I mean, if you do look, Robin and I have had this discussion before, but the assessed valuation as it goes up in the county, because of the 1% cap, we do tend to bring in a little less in taxation, but it is more over the prior year, so.
All right. Next slide. If you can move. I'll just slide it over. Oh, there we go. Yep, thank you so much, Jennifer. So, I think what's important on the sales tax revenue is you see the out-years of 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24. During the pandemic, you can see a huge surge in the sales tax revenue. And then you see it coming down, a little bit of movement up, but then in 23, later 23, and 20, early 24, you can see that it's pretty flat as compared to the previous years before the pandemic. And that really is what our revenue issue is becoming commissioners, is that our sales tax revenue, that's the flattening that, that we're describing. It is growing, but it's growing at a smaller rate than anticipated. So, we factored in a 2%. That's very conservative, but it's coming in at 1.6, 1.7. So, what I want to just highlight is the 2% was already conservative, but when it comes in below that, it means that we're not meeting our projection, and that's effectively like a loss of revenue. So that's what's going to create a lot of pressure as we look at the forecast on the budget. I want to pause to see if there's any questions about that. And this is what the economists refer to on the screen. You know, nobody knew coming into the pandemic what was going to happen to the economy. Folks were projecting a U, a V, a straight line, because it was a time unlike any before. But now, what economists have described is that it's a wave. It goes up, and then it's coming down. And while we're hoping and waiting for it to get to, to start picking back up momentum, it's just pretty flat. That flatness is a problem for us, because it would have to grow in order for us to keep pace with where things are growing, as we talked about regarding expenses. It's more expensive now to run anything, really, because of inflation. And so, the county is not immune to that dynamic as well. Any questions?
Yeah, so really, we're coming in at 0.4% less than what we anticipated when we were saying we were going to be coming in at, with 2% was going to be the number.
Yes.
1.6% is the number.
Yeah.
So, 0.4% is the deficiency we're faced with.
0.4, 0.3, yeah.
Okay, but $12 million, that's, is a lot more than 0.4%. That's where I'm trying to.
Yeah, we haven't got there. We're going to get to the, the forecast and talk a little bit about.
Just on that number, though, I know we've gone, over time, we've, we've dropped that number. I mean, we were 5% projection at one point, and I know we went down, you know, as, as time went on, and the numbers, I'm looking at Robin. But at a certain point, we used to think of 5% as a reasonable.
So we'll have additional information on Wednesday that drills down into sales tax and how it's changed over the years.
But, but in the out-years, Chair, to your point, I think some of the out-years have 4% or 5%, and we hope to try to get there. But the team does adjust when it realizes it's coming in lower.
But when some of the, like, some of the maintenance level expenses that we have, when those decisions were made, there might have been a 5% plugged into the projection. I mean, that's been, that's been reduced down to 2, but.
Yeah, this is an evolving conversation, to your point. The economy coming out of the pandemic for the last bit is very unpredictable. And so, you're right that there would be budgets that are programmed with different numbers, that you're making decisions off of that, because that's what a forecast is. You're looking out in the future and trying to gauge. And as the dynamics change, our commitment is to bring that back to you, to re-adjust the conversation, because the commissioners are making those real-time decisions based on the information staff are providing.
And maybe for the public that might be viewing this, we've been in this mix for a while. Could you explain to the public why we're tardy getting some of this information due to some tech change stuff? I think, I think that's at least worth letting the public know the reality of what our folks have been up against, and why they're working all through the night.
Yeah, that's a fair question. Commissioner Edwards, you know, our organization made the right decision to migrate from an old financial system to a new one. Anytime you have a migration of a system-wide computer system like the one we did, there's always challenges and implementation aftermath that you have to work through. And we are working through that change management process right now. It's a very busy time for the county, as it was probably for most jurisdictions. So, the team has been working on it very hard over the last several months. I think this has been planned for years. And in working it through, we had to make the decision to switch over. It's like getting from, switching horses in the middle of the stream. And as we switch over, there's been a period of time where we are working with our vendor on the adjustment of information, how that information comes out of the system. And so, there's been a bit of a delay in getting information. Some of that is understandable, but some of it is because this is a very complex, probably one of the most major IT integration processes this county will go through for the next foreseeable future. And so, we're doing that in the midst of a very uncertain economy.
Thank you.
Next slide. Yeah, this is the sales tax rate. You can see that slope starting to even out. That's what causes us problems. But we would all love the slope to continue to go up. And if its disposition is upward trend, then, of course, that means that the revenues are better able to keep pace with expenses. When it starts to flatten, that's when things become more challenging. We put this slide in here because oftentimes there's questions about what are examples of revenue for the county. This is really more just for background information, but the budget team is informed that we've shared this information in the past. And so, we didn't want to strike this information out. If there are no questions, we can just move forward to the next slide.
I mean, one thing here, just, we're always talking, you know, we always talk about property tax and the 1% cap. What, and Robin, I think you know, probably know this off the top of your head, the percentage of the general fund that's funded by property tax?
Around 40%.
Okay, that's what I thought. I mean, what surprises me is when we're always talking about, well, let's, let's change that and make it 3%, but like, that's like less than a million dollars, or it's about a million dollars. When we started the conversation, it was four something per percent. So, it was like less, I think it's up to a million. But it, just to say that when you're talking about a 5, 10, 15 million dollar shortfall in a general fund, there, there's got to be more answers to it.
Structural reasons, not just a one aspect.
Yeah, I mean, the property tax cap, which is, contributes to the problem, isn't the whole problem.
Correct.
1% growth is less than that 10 million dollars.
Could double our ability to raise property tax in it, it would make nary a dent in a $10 million budget hole, for example.
Right. It's a good point, because you're putting into context of what the dollar is equated to.
Well, just everyone focuses on that, as if fixing that, and then county governments are, are gold. But it's actually not. It's more, quite a bit more complex than that.
It is, yeah. All right, next slide, please. Summer, you want to, someone, Robin, operating revenue, all funds?
Okay, so the budget is set for 2024. The taxes were 1.81.7 million, charges for services 123.1 million, intergovernmental revenues for 59.2 million, and other was 77.4 million, for a total of 441.4 million. If you look at the 2025 budget as adopted, the taxes are at 191 million, charges for services of 124.4 million, intergovernmental was 55.6 million, and the other was 63.8 million, which only totals to 434.8 million, which is less than the revenues that were anticipated for 2024.
And go to the next slide. General fund tax revenues.
So, speaking about the general tax, our general fund tax revenues, almost a similar situation, slightly higher, but the property taxes in 2024 were 49.5 million, and sales tax 27.2, other taxes 6.4 million, for a total of 83.1. 2025 budget is 50.9 million in property tax, 28 million in sales tax, and 6.4 in other taxes, for a total of 85.3 million. Not very much more, but a slight increase.
All right, next slide, please.
Okay, so reviewing the expenditures for all funds, in 2024, our operating expenditures were anticipated at 520.2 million, capital at 55.5 million, for a total of 575.7 million. 2025 was budgeted operating at 477 million, capital at 14.7 million, for a total of 491.7 million. The general fund budgets for operating was 141 million 2024, and 135.1 million in 2025.
This is just an overview of capital improvement plan, comprehensive plan for capital needs, includes projects, cost for '24 through '29, and includes information on how the county will pay for those projects. Then the next slide gives an overview of the capital expenditures, dollars and millions. And then the, the next slide, this is the forecast. As amendment one was approved, and this is kind of where we're at before any of the budget requests for the biennial are in. And this is a concerning forecast, because what we see outside of 2025, barely meeting our cash flow, and we have a note there that says, fund balance below this line results in negative cash flow, meaning we don't have the funding to support the payment of bills. The other note that's on there is that you see it go up and then come down in a sharp decline, and then the line continues to track up. That line's tracking up without any consideration for future years of additional ongoing requests. So, that line just will go up because of the built-in COLAs and other inflators that we have to do cost of business. But it really takes out any consideration of, in future years, if the board is going to improve other type of ongoing funding requests, then the line would go up even higher, which just creates a broader disconnect between the revenues and the expenses. The real issue, Board, is that we have a, a budget structural deficit issue that leads us into the negative. And that's where we're going to spend in the next upcoming meetings, conversations about what the budget team's thoughts are about where we go. What I will say is that at the time of the amendment, the board saw a very different outlook, and so made decisions based on that outlook. Staff have done a very thorough check of this information, even as late as this afternoon, just verifying and making sure that we're, there's something in the model that we're not missing. I want to thank the budget team for working through the TC Connect challenges to get the accurate information out, working with Robin as a continuity component, to make sure that we're looking at all the different things we need to look at, putting this together, and us looking at this situation. What this represents is a operating offset of, conservatively, about $12 million. And we're not at this time ready to talk about how do we adjust, but we will be having future conversations about things that the county needs to do to adjust that, because we cannot be below that line in the out-years.
Are you open for questions? On page 10, we're talking about the 24 general fund tax revenues. So, at, at the end of 24, it's supposed to be $83 million in revenue, is that right? And then in 25, it's $85 million. But on the expenditure side of things, on the next page, instead of 83 million, we're at 141 million, and then in 25, it's 135. Those numbers don't, don't jive. Can, Robin, looks like she might have an answer.
So, when you look at page 10, those are only the tax revenues that are coming in to the general fund. It's not the total general fund revenue. However, if you look at 2024, the total budgeted general fund revenue is 124.7 million dollars. And as Leonard and Summer were saying earlier, we are not bringing in as much as we had budgeted. So, we anticipate this year, total revenue to the general fund will be approximately 120.5 million dollars. So, this, this is, just in, in numbers, demonstrates what's on the graph, that our spending is way more than our revenue is.
And then we don't have any way to address for additional inflation, I guess, because costs keep going up during this time period, as far as I can see. I don't see a, I don't see a break coming.
Yeah, if we can go forward past the forecast slide, where we can look at budget, oh, there we go, budget considerations. Last week, we were informed that the City of Olympia is considering, it's not a final decision, but considering adjusting their minimum wage to $24 an hour. Because we are the county seat in the City of Olympia, that would affect us. And so, the budget team and HR would need to do an evaluation, analyze what the cost impacts, but there most definitely will be cost impacts. When we look at the maintenance of effort discussion around the public safety sales tax, that's a conversation that we have to continue to have, and it's underway right now. But we need to bring that to the board for consideration from a policy discussion. Could have impacts. We're currently in conversations with Thurston County Sheriff's Office on a new contract with the union. That out, those discussions could have an impact on the county's budget. And then as we each. And then, as we just recently hosted our state court, the public defense new caseload standards is in motion and in conversation, and that will have an impact. So to your comment, Commissioner Edwards, I mean, all of this really speaks to the cost of business in the horizon being more expensive. So it's not as if there's any horizontal perspective that things are going to get less challenging. I think we have to look at, taking some of this into consideration, and where we're at today.
Any chance that you could, or maybe you don't know those facts yet, but what is our hourly rate for some of our lower echelon folks? Are we, do we fall within that twenty-four hours? Is our, is our lower rate maybe, or, or twenty-four dollars an hour? Or is the lower rate like eighteen or twelve, or?
Research. Yeah, we're doing the research on that.
So we don't have that?
We don't have it yet.
Yeah.
It's just something that was flagged, I think, last week, and I appreciate commissioners who are part of discussions, so. And, and others have reached out to the county, saying, this is going on. Will it have a budget impact? And my response was, we believe it will, we just have to do the analysis.
But when you say you believe it will, that's the minimum that someone is going to be paid. Well, we can't just bump up the minimum, folks, without having a compression factor.
It's a new floor.
Management, all the way up to the top floor. So it's going to have, especially if you looked at it from a percentage of increase, so.
It'll ratchet up.
It's going to ratchet up all the way to the top. So it's going to be, if that was to happen, it's going to be a substantial hit because of that compression factor.
Yeah, again, we, we just received the information, we're flagging it as something that we need to dive into. But as to the specific impacts, we would have to do analysis and come back.
I talked to an Olympia council member, asked about this, and got a little bit more context. They were engaged in a, a much longer terms discussion about that issue, as well as some things about, about predictable scheduling and other issues that relate to labor issues. And somebody came in, I guess there's an outside group, and there was a proposal.
Roche's Union from Seattle.
Proposal to just grab the minimum wage piece and just pass it quickly without, like sever it from this longer term process. And that was brought forward. But according to the council member I talked to, they're getting a lot of input about how, you know, difficult that would be to, to immediately implement. And that person's prediction was that it's, it's likely to stay on the longer term track of planning that was originally designed. I mean, this was sort of an eleventh hour, sort of, uh, uh, attempt by a particular constituency to push a piece of it and take it out of this bigger discussion. But it didn't sound to me, talking to this person, that.
Prediction I got from the other council member sounded a little different than that. So I think that there's differing opinions.
Well, I know that the council member you talked to got a lot of input in the wake of that meeting.
Probably.
That is, you know, changing the conversation.
Yeah.
So my prediction is.
That was a good meeting to get information.
Yeah, so I think, that's just what I, what I learned over the weekend.
Yeah, we would love to.
Because I hadn't heard about it as of last year, I mean, last week.
We would love to put ice on that budget consideration and cool it down a bit. The other items are more of a dynamic that, that we're working all the way through.
I think we'd be wise to look for opportunity in, in changes, too. So, you know, like, i- if that is going to be something that happens in the City of Olympia, there were, there were probably changes in the City of Olympia that would create opportunity for us. You know, I think about like Toyota, the Toyota dealership leaving Olympia meant a lot of money to Tumwater's budget. And I, I don't, I, I don't know if there's opportunity, but like, there's, there are I would imagine that, that auto mall could be greatly affected, and there would be, there would be places looking to find opportunities outside of Olympia. And, you know, we could, through whatever zoning or planning, try to, you know, create a soft landing zone for some of the refugee businesses, potentially.
You know, I, if we can go back to the forecast, not having been here when the, in twenty twenty-three, when the twenty-four, twenty-five budget was put together, but I know that the board and this organization was wrestling through at that time cuts as well. So this is something that, post-pandemic, as the economy is settling out and settling down, and revenue's flat, it's, it'll be something that we would have to reengage with, and it'll be our hope that we can start that conversation on Wednesday, some thoughts and ideas. I think that we would all want to see a more structurally sound budget that meets, and then has, we absolutely have to have the cash flow and some type of healthy reserve to try to mitigate any unforeseen issues that would, could pop up. This is not good news, and something that we're going to have to wrestle through. But I do believe that it's an opportunity for us, from a standpoint of budgetarily, to look at how do we structure things so that we can balance out.
I mean, I had, you know, I think I mentioned this at a previous meeting, but, you know, the, the decisions we made at the tail end of last year and amendment brought me to the limit of my comfort level with a totally different forecast.
Yes.
And I had difficult conversations with many elected officials about that comfort level, and where their comfort level was a lot different than mine. But in light of this, in light of this forecast, obviously, it's a totally different conversation, and we're going to have to probably re-educate and re-engage with our different department heads and electeds.
Chair, what I would say to that is, we do understand that, had the information been accurately presented at the time of the amendment, that the decisions would have been completely different. So I think staff would just express their, and I, I, as a county manager, express our, our apology for that being the dynamic. And so we, we stand ready to, you know, work with you all as commissioners to help support the information so we can move things forward.
A big piece of that is TC Connect, and trying to implement that, isn't it?
Yes.
And then, I think the public ought to know that this is not unique to Thurston County. Our surrounding jurisdictions are faced with something very similar. I don't know to what extent, but I mean, just from a layman's perspective, it looks like we're about ten percent short.
That was going to be my remark, is like every other jurisdiction just about is in the same boat and having the same discussion. I, I, and it seems like, you know, when I, I see the big bump, and it seems like there was, you know, just these big influxes of money through, there was, you know, the increases in sales tax, the increase of, you know, federal funding was coming in, and then expenditures went up along with that increased revenue, and we're still trying to figure out where we, where our solid footing is. When, when you report out like the expenditures and the operating, I, I'd like to see what it was prior. You know, we're, we're only going back to twenty twenty-three, I'm really curious what it was in twenty nineteen. And I know that, you know, over, over time, it, you know, we wouldn't ever look like we did in twenty nineteen, but, you know, what, what is a, what, what is our new, what should our baseline be? Because it seems like we're off, so I, you know, I'd like that information.
Yeah, we can get that together. I think that's kind of what the team is thinking about, is giving you some historical comparatives, even a list of positions that have been added, so that you can start to see, from a global view, of where things have increased, so that, that helps with decision-making.
Yeah, what, what were pre-COVID service levels and staffing levels? And is there a way to like, you know, like, you know, we, we see these charts. If COVID never happened, is there, is there a chart they could project with, you know, something like, what would a normal rate of increase in revenue and expenditures look like in a magic world where we didn't have all this, you know, funky alien money coming down from nowhere?
So the spreadsheets we have can show all that. And that's what we have ready for Wednesday.
I, I think that the board was in a very unique situation back when the red and green line crossed, because it was dealing with an unprecedented amount of fund balance, and.
We were at a point where we had to.
Exactly.
We had to spend down balance, so.
But we were like at the upper statutory limit. We were, and with a very uncertain
Yeah.
future. You know, the ability to, for government staff to be able to predict what was going to hap, happen after the pandemic, let alone, you know, full-time economists, there's just a lot of different viewpoints. So in that environment, created a, we're coming out of the pandemic, cash reserves are high. If you take an optimistic view of the economy, things are going to, things are going to come back, normalize, but they're not going to go way, way down. And, and, and that just, some of that didn't materialize. And so I do think that it's an opportunity for us to structurally look at. I think that's the key word, structurally, like what you said, what's our, what's a baseline that we can be at? That, and takes into consideration growth versus not growth, and how do we toggle up and toggle down? I will say this, that it's always easier for government to toggle up than it is to toggle down. There's a lot more pain, because once you start bringing ongoing expenses in, they integrate real fast, partly because, like many organizations, we were still dealing with post the recessionary issues, you know, coming off of the twenty, oh eight, oh nine, two thousand and ten, the Great Recession. I look at the budget and how things were going and a trend, and things were going fairly well, and then that hit, and you guys had to reduce services. Well, there was like a, a build back for, for almost nine years. And then you had a bunch of money coming in, and it's like, wow, things look really good, and our, our cash reserves are flush, and no one knows what the economy is going to do, but it looks like it could be we, it could be strong. So you start to spend. It's, it's not unreasonable where this situation got us. It's just, it's always painful for government to have to toggle down.
Like the eighties all over again.
It's been quite a, yeah, it's been quite of a weird roller coaster.
It is, you can see back.
If you look at, if you look at twenty eighteen, the very beginning twenty eighteen, that's where the red and green crossed. That's when I launched my campaign. And I was talking a lot about the.
Budget, knew it was all your fault.
You can, I was talking a lot about the budget, because you can see that prior to that, there was a couple of years of, of deficit spending, and the, the fund balance, which looked okay in twenty sixteen, was dropping toward the cash flow in twenty seventeen. So in twenty eighteen, I'm talking about the budget, and then boom, we were, I mean, it actually happened during that year, before I got here, but the, the lines crossed in twenty eighteen, and when we had, it just was growth, growth, growth. And then the COVID and federal money, it was still looking okay, but then, I guess, the big spike of red is inflation, very effect at, in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, because I, I.
When we were going to, I mean, my, my point is just, we were going to have to have a red over green for a little bit because of that, that federal relief money. So that's not anything that was, that looked concerning to us at the time, it had to be.
Yeah.
But it didn't have to be at that, at that magnitude.
And what, what you're saying, Chair, is that, is that green line, when, when the red goes way up, the thought was, we, we were hoping that that green line would have also kept pace, but it starts to flatten pretty significantly.
Right.
And that's, that's what the divide is. That divide is what gobbles up the fund balance. And to the budget team's chagrin, they, some of them spent quite a few years building momentum to have healthy fund balance, and to see it drop out like this is disheartening for them.
I want to add that, you know, yes, and also, I mean, the inflationary factor, it wasn't just us adding positions. We got hit with several several other costs. I, I remember the risk insurance going up by an extraordinary amount one year. We had the medical benefits, I remember having that discussion with the board where it went up. So there were just a lot of factors of just the cost of doing business, where those went up quite a bit. The risk management, I, I mean, I remember that figure in my head, like, still to this day, it was an additional one point nine million dollars that no one had estimated, that just really hit us, and it was something that, you know, we have to pay. We have no choice in that.
Yeah, vehicles are more expensive, insurance more expensive, medical premium more expensive. Over negotiating contracts with employee groups, more expensive, you know, because they were seeing a healthy fund balance and a very positive outlook for the economy, too. So they're coming in saying, hey, you know, we were left behind, we want a lot more. So there's a lot of hard decisions that this board has had to make. And there's a lot of reasons for those green and red squiggly lines going up and down on the map. So we look forward to, in, in future meetings, coming back and having conversations about how we got here, to, from the standpoint of providing global perspectives, so that's easier for you to make decisions on how we move forward. That, the team stands ready to answer any questions that you may have. Oh, sorry, question, calendar. The only question we have there, Board, is October twenty-seventh. We believe is too far out, so we'd like to actually do the board preliminary decisions the week of the fourteenth and the sixteenth. So we'll be adjusting that, and, and, but that's a, I think that was a backstop the staff kept, what we think we can do at the fourteenth to the sixteenth.
Twenty-seventh is a Sunday.
And that's why it's wrong.
I mean, I'm happy to be here, but I'm just making sure that the calendar's not off, because that's not usually a day we, we work on the budget.
I would say that the team really needs your decisions by the sixteenth.
Yeah.
So, once again, TC Connect is going to cause challenges with producing the book that they need to publish on November eighteenth.
I'd love to say we wanted to give you a Sunday back for football and. That's an error, so we apologize.
How do we get this preliminary kind of message out to other folks that are going to be having opinions and thoughts on?
Yeah, I think what we do is we send, so, this has come together over the last several days. And again, I really appreciate the hard work of the team. So it would be good for us to send a message out with the forecast, saying that the forecast is this, and that we need to come. It'd be good for folks to, to tune in or to come to the net, to the meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah.
We start to discuss it in earnest.
We start talking about tightening the belt, I don't want surprises.
We don't want any surprises, yeah. But our commitment was to make sure that the information was accurate, and the team has done, been doing a lot of work even over the weekend to make sure that this is the way it is, and looking for a formula that was wrong, or information that was wrong. But now we go forward, which we're pretty confident this is the, the outlook. So to communicate that out and start messaging that would be important.
Okay, so that's it for that topic for today.
I think so. Next slide is just the roundup slide, and thank you so much.
Okay, then next up is our standing items for Commissioner check-in on Monday afternoons, reports on external boards and commissions, committees. Everybody have a external.
I, along with two other commissioners, as the Chehalis Basin, what, what, is there a title? I sit on the committee, I'm the.
The Chehalis River Basin Flood Authority.
I'm the flood authority appointee, representative, yeah. We went on the Chehalis Basin flood tour, and we started in Centrelia, got on a bus and toured the city of Centrelia, looking at where they're raising some houses. They talked about why they're raising them, and talked about the process. We went to Bukota, looked at where they're raising some more houses. So if you're familiar with the issue, the houses there are flood prone in some areas. They have to have additional flood insurance, and so through federal grants, they're able to raise up some of these houses and make it to where the floodwaters won't affect them in, in the years where there are floods. And then, and that was cool, the, I really, I think the most fascinating part was going to the Skookamchuk Dam and getting to walk across that. I know that Commissioner Mensah really enjoyed it, too, it was a beautiful day. And they, it's a dam that was built in nineteen, what was it?
Seventy.
Seventy?
Seventy.
Yeah, but I think seventy is right. A large earthen dam, and they talked about, you know, the, when it was built, it was built to, to produce power for TransAlta. TransAlta is shutting down, so those power needs will no longer be there, and it's creating some opportunity for water rights within the basin. And then they also talked about, you know, kind of their, their main goals are like water preservation and then species preservation. I thought it was interesting where they talked about the only, there was a, there's a spillway that fish can get through on the dam, but it's between when the dam is at like five hundred and sixty feet and five hundred and seventy feet, you know? So if it's, if it's not in between there, the, the. So if it's, if it's not in between there, the, the fish don't have natural passage, so they're looking for, for other ways to get the fish upland. Uh, and then we went to the River Bend Ranch where we toured some, uh, river restoration projects that were, uh, also very fascinating. So it was, it was a good day with the time well spent.
Anyone else have an external committee report?
I attended the Chehalis Basin as well, attended Park Mountain. Attended Offutt Lake meeting with, uh, Commissioner Mensah and it was, it was very well run. Attended a family support center fundraiser and I attended the public hearing for the Supreme Court that I already gave a thorough report on.
I went to the medic one gala too. Forgot about that one.
That was good. Yeah, I don't have any, I attended a ton of stuff, but it's nothing's really a committee report that we need to bring to the board. Commissioner Fournier covered the Chehalis thing really well. So on commissioner items then, if I could start, and I'm just gonna dovetail on the Offutt Lake. So we did the Offutt Lake, like it was the annual meeting, but, um, we also heard an earful on some unrelated top or less related topics. One of which is this propane fueling station near the lake that's being put in and I'd never heard really much about it. I mean, I feel like I've heard something about it.
Yeah, we, we got an email about it like eight months ago, uh, where somebody was, they had some issues with the rail cars making noise at night.
They're really concerned about safety and like proximity to the river. I'm gonna let Commissioner Mihia talk about it.
It's with the Rochester, uh, line. It's not really, they say it's a Rochester, but it's not really. Rochester, the owner is actually from Seattle, um, and, uh, they kind of did this propane. They, it, it's basically same from the email, um, that we received eight months ago, especially with the bright lights and all of this. But there was just a lot of concerns from, uh, citizens because they thought that that was something that, you know, the county had permitted and that we had allowed to go on and, uh, it is not. It's actually, since they are a rail line, um, they have a different kind of process that they go through. But it's the same rail line where there's been a lot of concerns in Tonino and Dakota because it kind of runs all throughout there. Rainier, um, and Public Works is very familiar with them. They've had to, get in touch with them several times about different things and it's.
I wanted to bring it up because it's the kind of issue where if, if I'd had that conversation by myself and I didn't know much about it, like I would go to public or like, you know, I would be like doing a research project, but I heard Commissioner Mihia knew a lot more about it than I did, so I don't wanna reinvent the wheel. Like if Public Works is already engaging with those folks or something, I don't, I don't need.
Is it the same group that you dealt with in the Rainier Tressel issue?
Yeah. So it's, it's that same group. Uh, Public Works isn't engaging with them right now about that situation. That one's separate from the, they were dealing with them with the Rainier Tressel. That was.
These are Offutt Lake folks?
No, uh, this is, uh, Rainier and Public Works had to deal with them with the Tressel and.
Them, meaning the railroad?
Yes, the railroad, yeah. Um, I.
Well, I just wanna clarify, like for me, like I, I'd like to learn a little more about it. And then it's like, I always like to clarify for constituents, you know, where are, are fields of influence? I mean, they seem to think the county had permitted it, allowed it.
Railroads have a tremendous amount of autonomy, just like the utility companies.
And that's what I told them. I said, I said, I don't know about your situation, but I know in many other contexts dealing with the railroad, they've been given, you know, because railroads don't work if any local government can, can hold them up, right? So back in the day when they were created, they were given incredible autonomy to override, you know, local government's control. And so it's, it wouldn't surprise me if there's not a lot we can do about it, but I, you know, I promised them to kind of look at and see kind of what this is all about.
Yeah, and so, um, the reason I spoke up is because I've had to deal with them. Uh, when I, Tonino was in my district, there was a, a part of Tonino where the railroad crossed us and it was the materials that they were hauling, um, there were a lot of complaints from several daycares that were by the rail line and, um, we contacted the Department of Ecology, right, about this because we were trying to figure out. And basically what we ran into is we didn't, you know, even with the state, we didn't really have a lot of say or jurisdiction or anything. And unfortunately, they're not as willing partners to have these conversations with us either.
And they don't want you knowing exactly what's being run up and down the rail.
Do we, means, do we, do we have any role in that refilling station and we just have to give them what they want because they've got the right? Or do we not, are we not even involved? I mean, I couldn't figure out if we're involved in what they were worried about, which is this propane refilling station. Which they say is really quite close to the lake and the community there. Do you know anything about it, Commissioner?
I just know it's been going on for a long time. And now there's some people that are becoming more aware of it. And those people have now brought their concerns forward. I don't think we've got any say.
One of the gals said, um, well, even if we can't stop them, they're running, basically the, to get to it, it's so close that they run their trucks through these like neighborhood road. And like, they're like, if we can just get them to put in a sidewalk and a road, like I'm walking my dog or I'm running or whatever. Here comes this big truck and they don't care about, the road's not big enough for them and they don't care about the community members that are, you know, on the side of the road. And so, you know, she was basically saying, well, even if you guys can't stop this thing, if you could, you know, leverage the ability to make them improve the road or.
I, I don't think there's any leverage ability. They are the great utility, the grand utility, whatever you wanna refer to them as. For those reasons that you laid out, that local jurisdictions cannot be intervening in that transport.
Just like the quiet crossings and that, you know, they have a tremendous amount of power.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure I knew what you guys knew, cause I didn't, I remembered, like when they said it, it's like, I think I've heard of this, but I, I didn't go, I think it must have been an email eight months ago that you're talking about that I saw. But I just didn't really follow up with it at that time, so I didn't know if there was anything.
And I think a piece of this is the, the green thing about no more gas, all electricity, more awareness on that segment of the community. So they feel their wishes aren't being.
Some of these railroad lines are small privately owned railroad lines though, so there may be local influence, just, you know, if you find out who owns them, just on a personal level.
Well, that's what I said. I mean, maybe the board can write a letter, even if it's not gonna, you know, have a lot good chance, but maybe we can, you know, we can advocate.
Mayor Shaw has a lot of experience with them and he told, he gave me an earful about. Because, you know, I was like, I was thinking the same thing when I was dealing with that. Yeah, I was like, okay, well, and I called Mayor Shaw and I was like, what is your experience? And he was like, if you have any luck, let me know.
Yeah. Matthew.
Resident advisory, or resident response group.
Okay.
So I can reach out to Sandy and have her send over the information that she updated us. She let us know that there's not much the county can do, but there was a specific agency that concerned citizens could reach out to. I can't remember that.
I'd love to see that. Yeah, that'd be great. If you could do that to Linda and then I would be able to give people that information when I run across them. Appreciate it. Other commissioner items? Then I'll throw one more. Um, I'm sitting on Wednesday at a, the local leader, local leaders roundtable with Congresswoman Strickland and I just wanna make sure if there's something you guys wanted me to bring up. She hears, you know, from local leaders about issues that we might need federal help on or whatever. I didn't have anything on my list, but I, I'm not always thinking about everything.
I, I do. Okay, so these are for federal requests. The RACE grant that's going to be coming up with Public Works, uh, just in Grand Mound, um, I know that.
What do you call it? RACE?
The RACE grant.
RACE.
And so this was something that Public Works had talked about. I'm not sure, again, I'm talking out of turn here. I have not checked in with, with, uh, Public Works or Jennifer Walker about this, but it was something that they were thinking about applying. So if they still are, it would be great to let them, our congressional delegates know that, you know, we are interested in, in this grant and that we might be applying or if they are.
Can you find that out for me, Rob?
I got it. When is the, when is the breakfast or the meeting?
It's Wednesday at like four thirty. That'd be awesome, just to give you an update there. Perfect. Thank you.
Thinking, is this, is this with Congresswoman Strickland?
Yes.
Thinking her for the fair project funding, um, and for pushing that through. I think always a note of appreciation is always.
Remind me on that, what is the, like, what is the dollar amount or the project specifically?
I'll bring that up for you. Josh has a request, I'll shoot it to you.
Okay.
Request we submitted.
Thurston saves, right?
TC saves.
Give me prep for that, for that meeting. Thank you. Yeah.
I just thought one of you two were gonna say something about the fifty-year EMS deal.
Oh. I said I was there.
Oh, you said you were there?
I said we were there.
I said it was great, yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess I missed it.
Ben did an awesome job of putting it together and I was.
Ben really took that on and.
It was a great event. Very touching.
The, the four nineteen seventy-four paramedics telling stories was awesome. And the, the one, like the most, my favorite part just is, you know, an eye opener, how far we've come was when he was talking about when they first brought on paramedics, they hired six total. And they worked in teams of two, twenty-four on, forty-eight off. And there was nobody to cover, like, you know, twenty-four on, forty-eight off, that's a normal schedule.
Yeah.
You know, I, I worked that, but there's also more than six of us. And so if you're a guy that, or person that was coming in to relieve you, called in sick, you didn't get relieved. And now they have that, that happens in the fire service lot and you'll get mandatoried, is what happens. But back then, there were no laws. So if you got mandatoried, you worked for free. So you got a salary and those were the hours you got paid for. And if you got stuck there another twenty-four hours.
He said seventy-two hours one time.
Yeah, seventy-two hours and he only got paid for twenty-four of them. That's amazing.
Well, back before seventy-four, you know, who was the ambulance company? The Undertaker.
The Undertaker or the hospital.
You, when you were driving the ambulance, you either went to the morgue or you went to the hospital.
Yeah.
That was my gig.
All right.
And then, uh, one more thing for the federal.
Yeah.
Please, um, it would be, uh, just a question of like, what are going to be the priorities next year for, um, for us for appropriation request? Every year there's, there's something different. So seeing what the priorities are for Congress, if there are any specific priorities. That way we can start preparing for our federal ask on what would actually fit.
Like they'll give a theme or a type of?
Yeah, like, uh, every year they do, there's, they're just different. Congressional delegates have different priorities that they're going to be pushing for.
So this would be Strickland's decision?
Yeah, so just seeing, uh, because, uh, she only allows one request, uh, per jurisdiction, so.
Money to build a courthouse?
So just seeing, uh, see what her, if she's gonna be shooting for, aiming for any specific priorities, that way we can, we can start prepping.
Okay, got it.
Anything for Lot that I should be aware of?
For Lot?
No, okay, then you're gonna go. You're gonna be able to go to both. Okay, cool.
Yes, yes, I, I gotta cover. Okay, and that's the end of today's agenda. We'll adjourn until tomorrow at nine, I think.
Okay, six AM.
Nine o'clock.